...the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education regular meeting on September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two at six thirty P. M. in the Mount Pleasant High School cafeteria. This meeting of the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education is a meeting conducted in the public but is not a meeting of the public. There is a time of public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct regular business that requires action by the board. These items may include those discussed at a previous meeting or presented to the board for discussion this evening. As courtesy, please turn on your cell phones and stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Indigenous land acknowledgement statement. Mount Pleasant Public Schools is honored to acknowledge the Anishinaabe people whose traditional land we are gathered on today. To recognize the Anishinaabe people and their industrial lands are expression of gratitude and appreciation and a way of honoring the Indigenous people who have been living and working on this land since time immemorial and whose land on which the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian tribe have resided on and who have continued to reside on for centuries. We feel it is important to understand the longstanding history of this land and to seek to understand our place within that history. Local.
Sheila Murphy.
Here.
Jessie Gadjonigan.
Here.
Rudyan Pango.
Here.
Sam Whitaker.
Here.
Dana Cotton. Courtney Stegman.
Amy Gold.
Here.
Next is the approval of the agenda. Does anybody have anything that they would like to change?
I'd like to add something under new business, letter D, for the board of education.
Anything else? All right, next is the Student Board of Education representative report with Isabel Goodrich.
Okay. Good evening, board members and everyone in the audience. My name is Isabel Goodrich and I'm the Vice President of External Communications on Mount Pleasant High School Student Senate E-Board. So, we have had the absolute best start to our school year. The feeling is different, a few more happier, and in better moods. Mount Pleasant High School has always been a great place to be, but this year is full of excitement like no other. So, some of the things we've been working on. First, unfortunately, our planned chalk-a-walk, which is something we do every year where student senate members write positive messages and pictures in chalk on the sidewalks around the school the night before the first day of school. It was canceled because it rained that night, so that was kind of sad. But, as senate members, we have been involved in a ton of awesome activities to start this year. First, we all worked the freshman orientation and we helped students, showed them how to open their lockers, where their classes are, and handing out schedules, and we did that as well at the open house. We also helped patrons with the new casual system at the football games. We created and organized our first annual fashion show to show the freshman class what is appropriate to wear for Spirit Week and also what is appropriate to wear to the homecoming dance. And as far as homecoming, which is this week, we're all super excited and we've been planning a lot of awesome stuff. So first, we have four awesome showcases that we worked on last week. They're all in our building over that way if you want to go see them. The floats are coming along very nicely as well, and we want to say big thank you to campus life, which is where we've been able to build our floats and put them all together. And you'll get to see those if you join us at the parade at four thirty on Friday, which will also be like downtown area. And then, we have selected our homecoming corps, which is for the class of two thousand and twenty-six is Carmen Loyah and William Garcia. Two thousand and twenty-five is Rowan Cross and Nick Geis. Two thousand and twenty-four is Lakin Carr and Asia Dennis. And then, our senior representatives are Sally Graham, Ryan Zarowski, Avery Benaski, Adriana Aicles, Aubrey Garcia, and then Kayden Benaski, Josh Wilson, Max Humphrey, Blake Moore, and Scooter Polk. And then, we have also selected our judges for homecoming, which are Mr. Taylor, Ms. Lockwood, Ms. Bacis, Ms. Dexter, and Mr. Beckman. And then, um, we hope you will show your oil pride at the game on Friday night. We're playing Bay City Western. Uh, we will crown the two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three homecoming king and queen. And a little fun fact is that the class of nineteen seventy-two is having their fifty-year reunion, and the queen from nineteen seventy-two is going to be here on the field and help us crown our royalty, which is pretty cool, I think. And then, finally, the royal wall, which has been all this stuff leading up to, will be on Saturday at seven o'clock. All of our senate members have been working their butts off getting ready. We've been working on decorating, all these events that I told you about, and all of it. It's gonna be super awesome. And speaking of oil pride, we have a little gift for each of you. We have oil pride t-shirts like the one I'm wearing. Please wear it with pride. And then, any questions or anything?
I don't have any questions. I'd just like to thank you and your fellow students for all the hard work you've made to do, all the hard work you've done back in the beginning of the school year. So awesome.
Of course, we enjoy it.
And thank you for teaching.
Yes, of course. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. This is one of the board members that our senate members have to take off after this. I believe it's not rock practice, is that right? So, they're busy folks this evening. Thank you for being here. Thank you very much. Next is the student board report. Good evening, everyone. We have several items to report this evening. First, we will keep with the pattern that we established last year where every other board meeting, either representatives from the administrative team of Mount Pleasant Middle School or Mount Pleasant High School present to the board. This week's meeting, this meeting that we're at this evening, is Mount Pleasant High School Administrative Team. So I'll introduce you John Linkler, principal, Kristen Willie, assistant principal, and Lisa Davis, who is our other assistant principal, sends her regrets that she could not be here this evening. She's teaching a class at the tribal college, so that's why she's not with us. So, John, thank you for joining us.
Thanks for having us. First off, I think Kristen handed out a parking lot, so if there's any questions that you don't feel like asking or want us to think about a little bit, feel free to write those down and we'll collect them after. I think Kristen, Lisa, and I will all agree with the students that this has been a great start to the year. We've had an awesome beginning. I think the feeling is different. I think the, just the overall feel of a long, great start and so on has been, has been wonderful this year, so it's been, it's been great so far. You can go to the next one there, too. First off, like I said, I want to thank everybody who was involved in getting an additional assistant principal at the high school. To say it's made a difference is an understatement. Like I said, we have had, like I said, we've brought on two new ones, Mrs. Davis and Mrs. Willie, and like I said, they have not only given us extra hands on deck, but they've also gave us a team that is as balanced as I've ever seen on an administrative team. Except we have so many, none of us are experts in everything, but I do say we have experts in just about every field between the three of us, like I said. So, between the three of us, like I said, I think we make a great team and it's been a great start there. Also, like I said, Mr. McIntyre coming on as A.D. has been a huge help and so on. He has helped us since we went through, so a lot of new faces, a lot of new ideas, and it's, it's been a great start. It's been something that's been wonderful for us. Um, I just want to go through a few points of pride here. The first one is, like I said, we had probably our best attended and most vibrant open house and new student orientation. You can kind of see a picture of it there. We had giveaways, we had cheerleaders, we had, we had, you know, everything. It was a great, it was a great way to kick off the year. We got to give expectations for kids. They got to see all the teachers, their classrooms, and so on. And I think some of that, having everybody in the building before we actually started on that first day and having all the expectations out was great for us to start the year that way. And so, like I said, it was, we've had a great start there. Lots of fun activities. You heard student senate members there talking about some of the things that they've done throughout the year, but like I said, school spirit has been great this year. I mean, everything from students doing the parking lot to all of the other things that happen on a day-to-day basis in this building. It's really fun to watch. Like I said, we've seen some new people. I've talked to other people who are new to the building and they said this is the, you know, most they've ever seen in a building and so on, and I would agree with them and so on. Um, I think it's done. I'd like Kristen to share the stage here.
All right, just like any new school year, I think that we need to teach expectations, and we've been doing a lot of that this year. Just refreshers on how to pick up and drop off in the parking lot. I think the next slide is we've really kind of hammered down hall passes and making sure kids had that hall pass when they are traveling to and from class. That's been huge this year. We actually, we'll see in a couple of minutes, the tardy report, and we'll notice it's going down a little bit from week to week, just making sure that kids are comfortable in the hallway. So, we've done a lot of pre-teaching expectations and PDIS kind of things this year. On the next slide, one of the things that I know as a new staff member here that I've continued to hear that we need some help with is communication. And I think it was kind of lack of having enough staff sometimes to do that. And so, I'm the over communicator, so I apologize, high school parents, but we do the weekly wag, just like the middle schools. So if you're transitioning as a sixth, seventh, and eighth grade parent, you'll see that same thing when your student's in ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth. And also, same thing for the staff, excuse me. The staff also gets a weekly wag. We put in all of the goodies Sunday night. They get to read it, and we try to limit those emails throughout the week to limit stressors, you know, try to do one-stop-shop email on Sunday nights. I'm kind of data, I'm very data-driven, and so there's a little metrics here that shows actually how many people pop open the wag. You can see where they pop it open, what country. We have people in many different countries who we read a wag, actually. And then, how many times, how many have spent reading the wag. So that kind of gives me some data that I could go back and, you know, figure out things for next week. So, I think that that's been huge. I've heard some compliments in the community about that as well from staff.
Another big thing was the one-on-one Chromebook initiative. Like I said, our students have enjoyed it. They, like I said, it's made things easier for teachers in the classroom. It's allowed kids to bring, you know, computers home where in the past they didn't have one. If we ever had to have some type of virtual, it will make that easier. Let's hope we don't. But if we do, like I said, the kids have, it's made learning, it's equalized the learning that's happened in our school, and I think that's been a big, you know, thing for us too, that the kids have that. Um, another thing then, you can watch the little PDIS thing that our oil spill with Mr. Anstott does. We've used that quite a bit lately where they introduce things, go through things and so on, and it's, they just did a great job kind of telling kids how to take care of them, how they're used for, etc. You know, if you ever get to see all of the different ones that they do, the oil spills, it's really great, so I kind of wanted to give them a plug while we were talking about that also here.
Sorry, I did not mean to do that. Not my left hand.
Briefly, just want to talk about, like I said, this week's homecoming. Today was College Day. It was amazing. I think we had, I think I counted over fifty different colleges that were today. I mean, obviously, the big ones there, Central Michigan State and Michigan, you know, were things, but we had so many different colleges represented today that it was kind of interesting. You can see the rest of the week there, our court and so on, and like I said, senate kind of talked quite a bit about all the different things, including the volleyball and the game and all of those important things, so.
And I know our student senate did a great job speaking, but I know some of them loved, they do, they do a fabulous job at homecoming week, and I think Miss Wishmeyer doesn't get enough credit. She does a fabulous job and is organizing many hats behind the scene. I know she's already at Montrock right now, probably. Um, on this next slide, what we've been working on a lot this year is putting our data in illuminate, just like the middle school's using. So our behavior interventionists plug it into illuminate, and then usually I spend Sunday evenings putting it into this nice chart for you. So we brought this back to our staff, and right now, our cellphone use in class, there was a new thing that we chatted about this year. We're putting cellphones away during instruction in class. You can see that that is our most, um, we need some, we need some expectations. We need to revisit that a little bit more in class. And so that's one of our biggest needs. So, um, that's doable. We could do that, and I'm excited to kind of work with our staff and, and use some professional development to talk about how we could kind of eliminate those distractions further. I think we're gonna see it a lot this year, but at the middle school, I could tell you, it kind of fizzled out, so I'm excited to go on that journey with this staff. On the next slide, you'll see majors versus minors. This is very similar to what you would see over when Darby brings you some data. So it will show us our minor incidents versus our majors, and that's all categorized in illuminate. We actually use green sheets at the high school, they use blue sheets at the middle school, that same kind of theory there. And then the next piece, which I think is kind of interesting, is part of the data is it tells us exactly where these discipline infractions are happening, and we're seeing a lot of it in the classroom. And when I go back to the first data point and see him because of cellphone use, so really, these are whole pain problems. We could fix them, and I'm excited to work with our staff on that this year. Okay? The last one right here is tardy reminders. I've been running tardy reports. I do that Thursday night. We hand out a letter to students whether or not they have a first, second, third, fourth, or fifth event. We took out the sixth one this year, just as a staff. We decided that was enough. We're able to track our tardies, and you can see on week four, that's the green, you can see how many kind of tardy offenses. The first one, we have a restorative conversation with the student, you know, why aren't you getting to the class play? Is it locker trouble? Is it, we're traveling all the way across the building? And so, our behavior interventionist rec does a great job with that, having conversations with students so we can be proactive and try to problem solve. Because it's a lot. This building is huge, so. All right.
One of the nice things about this is that when you're having your biggest problem being cellphones, and we accept that cellphones are probably the greatest invention in our lifetime, and I think people of my age would never believe, when they were in high school had all of these things like your computer, your phone, your calendar, all of the things that you have, all of the different things, all in one little device, and it's probably faster than the computer you have when you were a kid, it's all of these things. So, we understand that's part of their life, so we don't want to have it not be part of their life. We just also though looked last year and said, what is the greatest thing that's distracting kids or stopping them from learning in the classroom? And we realized it was cellphones. And so, we want them to know how to appropriately use cellphones. They're not going away. They're every part of their life, and so we wanted them to know when is the appropriate time, when it's not, and so on. And so that's why our cellphone policy is strictly in the classrooms. They can usually force a little after-school at lunch in between passing time and all of that. But we wanted to take away that non-engagement that cellphones were doing. Has it been a struggle? Yep. Any new change? Like I said, anytime you're, I mean, I think most people would like to play on their phones a lot of time and then have to go to work or do a classwork or any of those things. So, we're looking on that, like I said, and it's, you can see, each week has gotten better and better and better and like I said. Rather have those kind of issues than violence or illegal substances or all these other things that could be happening, and so, like I said, that kind of work, we'll keep, we'll be okay with cellphones being our number one thing. This next one, we go back one side. The next one then is, we spent a lot of time this summer, handbook, handbook revision is right up there on the list of most administrators' least favorite things they like to do. We do it every year. We go through it every year, but usually, like I said, we don't do complete revamping and so on. We started to look at ours, and there were some things that I know were probably written in the seventies and the eighties, and you could almost tell by the different things. There were still references to the ACT, there were still references all around. So we started this summer looking at it and saying, we are going to just do a completely new look at our handbook. And then we decided that, yep, we should do it together as a secondary handbook, so include the middle school and the high school together and have one uniform everywhere we could, especially on rules, so that kids could seamlessly transition from middle school to high school and not have a whole new set of expectation rules and so on. So we wanted one common secondary handbook. And so we went through that this summer. We worked on our code of conduct. We worked on every part of it, and one of the parts that we did was our dress code, and we saw many references in our dress code that probably were old language, um, you know, different things in there. And we wanted to make something that was easy to understand, easy for our kids to follow, and like I said, we, we always want to, if you ever walked through Mount Pleasant High School, I've been at quite a few schools, and we definitely encourage individuality. We don't want, you know, a dress code. We don't want any type of, you know, school uniform and things like that, but like I said, we want them to also understand that in any places, in any profession, there is a kind of a code of how you should dress that's appropriately, whether it be for safety and having the correct, you know, steel-toed shoes, or whether it's, you know, in whatever type of thing is, and that we have, you know, we want to dress ourselves for how it is in a public building and so on. So we started with a lot of the language for our handbook coming from Michigan Association of Secondary School Principals puts out a model handbook. We started with that, and that's kind of how we looked and said, what does middle school have? What do we have? What is the model language for it? And we adjusted appropriately. For some of the things, especially like the dress code, we also wanted to look at what does Trinma say about it, and so the MSFP one was kind of vague. Trinma brought in a few more specific things, and so you can kind of see where we're at right now. Also with additional administrators and new administrators, we're also being a little tighter on our, you know, enforcement of the things, but you can kind of see ours has most of the normal things, have to wear shoes, have to have, you know, things can't be inappropriate while we're on clothing and stuff like that, but you can see basically one covered from the chest down to, you know, the legs, the buttocks areas and so on, undergarments covered, and so you can see some of the parts of that in there. Really not a whole lot of changes. We just got rid of some of the things like spaghetti straps or things like that that were in old language and stuff, but. Any questions about that part right now before we finish with our pride thing, or we can wait till the end too, so.
All right. Okay, the last slide is something that we are going to be working on with our staff on the twenty-sixth. We have some PD day there. At the high school, we looked at, and I've been kind of observing what's been already going on the past couple of weeks, and we have a really good matrix in place, just like the other schools here at Mount Pleasant Public Schools. So what should happen in the classroom? What should happen in the hallway? What should happen in the cafeteria, restroom, and out of school? And so, I think that we, as a staff on the twenty-sixth, we're going to look at this PDIS matrix. We're gonna call it the oil pride matrix because pride runs deep here, and we are going to talk to our staff what should go, what should stay, what do you think's really important? And then we're gonna move to teaching the students the expectations. Coming from obviously the middle school, I will tell you during big breaks, we would always teach these, these items coming back from spring break or winter break, summer break, and so it's always good to review them as a staff and with our student body. Here at the high school, we call it culture camp, so I could see this being put into our culture camp slides at the beginning of the year as well. So we're really excited to take this to our staff next week and hopefully roll out my trimester two with our students too, okay?
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Kristen or John?
I do. I have a question on the data.
Sure.
Of course.
Yeah.
The minors and majors you were showing, and I'm trying to go back on my own computer, um, there are some where, we can see the four labels.
Oh, okay.
Especially the, the second one, so if we go back to the illuminate chart, so it's just because of.
Oh, yeah.
The up and up. And the number, I'm mostly curious, for the second most common.
Yep.
It says class, and I will reflect.
Disruptions.
Class disruptions.
Disruption, okay.
And are those numbers for a week or since our school year has started?
Since the school year started.
I reran it the day before, so.
Okay. So like when we see the two hundred and fifty minors, that is the last August, the last four weeks, so that's about four weeks.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's about, okay.
Thank you, Dana. And I'll make the text on it here. That's okay. Numbers simple.
I have a quick question regarding the student policy book, um, the guys. You say it's not ongoing. Is there a time that you're gonna kind of lock it down and kind of say, students, this is where it's at for a period of time?
I think we have it for this year, so, but then next summer, we'll probably look at any parts that, you know, either we took student suggestions or something's changed and so on, but we'll look at that. But I think we're, the handbook is set for both middle school and high school, so.
Did it put the handbook in your work packet this evening? It is over a hundred pages, and so I thought over the next several board meetings, we would have the administrators from the middle school and the high school go through different parts of it with you all so we can highlight those projects.
I do have one question. When there are infractions, are parents alerted to those?
Yes. So usually it starts with, depending, I mean, if it's a minor, if I like a cellphone one, generally it starts with a teacher notifying the parents. A continuing one might have one of our behavioral interventionists, and eventually, like I said, definitely for any type of major things, it's going to be an administrator.
But basically, anytime there's any kind of an infraction, the parent is notified.
If there's a disciplinary action, a few of the minors are just a discussion with the student or just noting that we have this issue, that, you know, there may not be any type of discipline.
Can I, can I kick you back, back on that question? So let's take the example of the tardies that we presented today. First, second, and third, what's this options? When is the parent contacted in, let's say, that tardy example?
Okay.
Are they contacted on the first?
For the tardies? Yes. Okay, can I repeat for that? On the first tardies, they get the letter home, and then in the letter that goes to the student. The second offense, I guess right here, that's a good question because we're giving it to the students sometimes. Through power school, though, we get the alerts that are being sent home too for the tardies, so the parents are, I guess, being alerted for absences that way as well. Also, students on the second events, they're going to after-school tutoring, which many of them are going to meet by sets tomorrow night. It's actually was, I've been there for the first time, and it was very well-attended, and students were getting help either for tardies or just for homework too. So, that actually, that's a good question. Maybe, yeah, we need to think about that a little bit more.
Right, and the tardies one, but let's say, you know, we talked about that, or the dress code.
For sure.
That is there. It's the same system, everything is there, like the first warning, second, and then at what point other parents brought in?
Okay.
In a way, that's not the data that can get switched in the bottom of the backdoor.
What do you mean? No, I'm kidding. Yes, that's a great suggestion. I like it.
Other questions for John or Kristen? Thank you both very much. So the next item on my report is the goal reporting. It's this format that I have here, should look familiar to all of you. This is the goal reporting format that we've had to do for the last couple of years as an extension of our COVID-nineteen Extended Learning Plan. So even though we're not required to do a plan every year, we are still required to have goals. And so these goals are the same as what we looked at last year, where we're looking at our students at the lower elementary level showing growth in reading, showing growth. So they're showing growth, but then they're also, we're also looking at their achievement data to look at where they're scoring as compared to the national norm grid. So we're looking at that in ELA and in math, and then we're looking at that in regards to the NWEA benchmarks. So in that, so this first section is for our lower elementary. Sorry, I'm struggling to scroll on this. And then the next section is for our upper elementary, where again, we're showing growth in ELA from fall to winter and then fall to the end of the year. The other thing that we can do now, since we've used this format for the last couple of years, we'll be able to compare year-to-year data as we actually get moving and get going on this. So then again, there's the national bench benchmarks, so we're looking at growth, and then we're looking at our, how our students are scoring on the national norm. And this is all for NWEA, going to sixth, third, eighth grade at the middle school, same thing. We're looking at their ELA goals, we're looking at mid-year scores, end-of-year scores for growth, and then we're looking at their scores as compared to the national benchmark. To remind everybody, we are. To remind everybody, we are in the middle of NWEA testing right now for the fall. We'll test again in January when we come back from winter break. And then we'll test again in May. So those are the three windows of testing that we have. The high school is a little bit different. So here are just the blank charts that we'll, you know, we'll fill out over time for you. Um, the high school is a little bit different because really what we're focused on there is getting our students college and career ready. And we determine that by looking at their scores on the PSAT and on the M-Step. So again, we're looking at their progress through the middle of the year and the end of the year. And there's information there regarding, uh, basic achievement. So other important things that we need to note for the state of Michigan is that during this school year, our primary mode of instruction is in person. We are now offering virtual learning like we have in the past. All of our goals are established as an extension of our Extended COVID Learning Plan, which I already mentioned. And our district's school improvement plan and our MYKIP goals align with these goals. And I'm going to show you that here in just a minute. Um, so basically, uh, through this, this process, we are required to review our goals and our progress toward our goals three times a year. So we're reviewing them this evening, although I don't have any data to report because we're still in the middle of testing. We'll look at it again at a board meeting in January. It has to be reported on prior to February 1st. And then we'll look at it again prior to the last day of school. So those are the three points throughout the year where we have to do this. If we jump over to this other document, what I like about this document, Linda and her team put this together as she worked with our administrators and with our PSC, uh, looking at our summary. So if, what you can see here is all of the activities that help us reach our goals. So we're measuring our goals based on what's happening on NWEA or on PSAT, SAT and M-Step. But there are hundreds of activities throughout the school year that are implemented that help us reach our goals. So this is a three-page document that highlights our math goals. Um, it goes through all the different ways that we're increasing support for our teachers. So we're really focused on teaching and learning and improving our scores. If you go, if you continue to scroll down. Um, you can see there where we're focused on activities that are improving on ELA, M-Step and NWEA. So we're focused with math core and we also have reading core. We have math support teachers. We have ELA support teachers. So we're trying to really hit hard those two core content areas and increase the support for teaching and learning. So I just thought this other document would help. Um, instead of just saying these are our goals, you can see here how we hope to achieve and implement our goals, um, over time. So and again, this is our school improvement summary. And now this is the process of the state of Michigan use is of MYKIP. So we're always building activities into our MYKIP plan that meet our goals.
Jen, would it be fair to say that this is a good example of some of the equity that we do in the district?
Well, this is support for everyone. So, you know, our, um, our administrators, when they hear talk about a multi-tier system of support, where, um, 80% of our students are, you know, in that tier one. So these would be tier one activities. There also are some tier two and tier three activities. So an example, perhaps a student that struggles in math might meet with a math core tutor. That might be a tier two or a tier three activity, depending on the student's need. So it does show across the board how we're meeting the needs of students that come in at a wide variety of levels.
How many, um, extra people have we gotten into the, the buildings to, to help with intervention? And I mean, I, especially, obviously, everybody knows, um, K-2, I think, got hit the hardest with the masking and, uh, and, uh, um, learning online. And, uh, I'm just wondering, are, are we providing every school with additional personnel?
Every school has a, a variety of different kinds of support. I don't want to give you a number Sheila, just because I don't, I don't want it to be wrong. But I, I can definitely get that. I can work with Linda to get the numbers of, of new support people in, in the last two years, because not everyone is new this year. We did bring in additional supports last year. Um, one of the biggest things that we're doing this year that is different is that we're really focused on coaching. So we have trained coaches that are working with our teachers in ELA and math. So again, we're hitting that tier one really hard because they're learning those skills and strategies from those coaches. But I can certainly put together the additional levels of support that we have. And you are right, where we've needed, where we've seen the need, the support the most is at our lowest elementary levels. Many of those students weren't in a formal school setting at all. And now are, are coming to us with, um, big learning gaps, not because they can't do it, but because they haven't been exposed to it. And so we have to, we have to make up that gap.
I would be really interested to know.
Sure.
And also, um, how do you decide who gets it? And do you go to each of the schools? Do their administration and staff request how, what kind of support they want? And then who makes the, um, actual decision as to what kind of support they do get?
And we can show you that again. Um, I, I think that you'll see that it's very, a very balanced support so that every building is getting the same support. They might not have, um, the, the same amount of FTE of a person because we, we, we have not much of a building that has...
Everybody's going to need different kinds of support.
Different, but, uh, we can definitely get that ready for you to show you at our next board meeting so you can see exactly where all of our support is.
I, I'd like to see that. And I'd also like to know, how, how are those decisions made? I mean, who, who makes the request for what kind of support that they're getting? Because obviously each school is different. So are you as the administration making that? Or are the schools, the, each individual school making the request? Because obviously what's needed for K-2 is different. What's for 3.5, which is different for middle, which is different for the high school. So I'm just wondering who's making those requests? And then who's making the decision what request gets still?
It's a very collaborative process, but we can definitely walk through that with you all.
Be interesting.
For sure. For sure. Other questions about this information? The next item on my report is Homecoming, but I think we've covered that enough that you all know it's Homecoming. There's a parade on Friday, fourth of June. We're hoping there, it's going to be great. Um, I do just want to highlight, you know, we're really focused on having, uh, additional and new days of celebration. And this year, we are very excited to, um, host and celebrate Orange Shirt Day. Orange Shirt Day is a celebration of indigenous peoples, uh, where we are celebrating that every child matters. And we know that we have families in our community that have been impacted by the indigenous boarding schools. Um, and so we will be celebrating Orange Shirt Day on Friday, September 30th. Um, and it's a great collaboration again with our school district and with the Saginaw School Indigenous Tribe. So we're really happy to be doing that. The activities that will happen in our buildings will be a little bit different at different levels. Um, but then again, it's Friday, September 30th. It's Orange Shirt Day. If there are any questions that can work? Very much. Uh, next is the requested financial reports.
Good evening. I have the requested financial reports for general fund and special service funds comparing, um, monthly of August 2022 to August 2023. For general fund, revenue is at 5% of budget this year compared to 5% of budget last year. And our expenditures are at 6% of budget this year compared to 12% of budget last year. That's really just the timing of when we did the reversals for the July and August payable benefits that really applied back to last year. You'll see that come more in the lineup next month. I have more case papers. Excuse me. For the special service funds, for the self-sustaining sports, for athletics, revenue was at 0% of budget this year compared to 78% last year. And expenditures are at 0% both years. That spike from last year is just the uniqueness of adding the dance program to the self-sustaining sports. For the children's learning center, revenue was at 8% of budget compared to 17% last year. And expenditures are at 9% of budget compared to 16% last year. For the nurse testing program, again, that's one we're just spending down the funding. Um, we will no longer have revenue in that program. And expenditures are currently at 7% of budget this year compared to 0% last year. For the food service program, revenues are at 0% of budget compared to 2% last year. And expenditures are at 0% budget compared to 1% last year. Again, that's just timing when we're receiving our, our reimbursement from state. For the school store, revenue was at 0% of budget for this year and last year. And expenditures are at 3% of this budget this year compared to 0% last year. For treasures report, on July 31st, we, in general fund, we had cash balance of $8.4 million. We have receipts in the month of August of $7.9 million and dispersments of $4.2 million. That brings us to balance on August 31st of $12.1 million. Remember, this is the time when we start, a lot of this revenue is actually from last year. It's recorded in last year's books, but we don't receive a state aid payment in the month of September. Yes. So, um, that kind of builds up a little bit with them not receiving that state aid in September. That's when we start spending it all back down. For the debt retirement fund, on July 31st, we had cash balance of $374,000. We had a small amount of interest income of $35, and no dispersments in the month of August. That brings us to balance on August 31st of $374,000. And for the capital projects fund, on July 31st, we had cash balance of $25.3 million. We had receipts in the month of August of $44, almost $45,000 and dispersments of $723,000. That brings us to balance on August 31st of $24.6 million. Any questions?
Yeah, I do.
Sure.
The COVID ESR funds. Do we have, you know, I, I guess I'm questioning why we never have, like, how much do we have available that we haven't spent? And how much are we expecting to come in that, you know, we will have to spend?
Sure. We have, um, several different COVID funds throughout the district. We have two that are actually, um, being finalized this month. It's the end of their reporting. So, um, we have another, our S R 2 grant. We have roughly $500,000 left to spend in that through September 30th of 2023. And our S R 3, we really have just budgeted for that. It's in the more detailed reports that you have. The budget's not there because it wasn't in for the new year budget. But that's another $3 million grant that we're just starting to spend this year.
Okay. And again, how, um, that money has to be spent specifically, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I'd be interested in, in seeing a report how we're spending that money and how we're deciding how that money gets spent? Because that should all be to offset all the problems that COVID caused. Correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So I would be really interested to see how that money's being spent and where it's being sent and how you're deciding to spend it where you're spending it.
Sure.
Okay? Thank you.
I have one quick question, Jen.
Sure.
Will see, uh, many budget before the middle of the year?
Um, usually we try to do it about December and January time. I would anticipate that being the same this year. And then we would have another one, another amendment. And our audit will be coming forward next month. I believe with the Senate Board.
October 17th. Okay, it's up there. Are there any more questions for Jen regarding budget?
Thank you very much.
Um, next, we are acknowledging correspondence at this point. We have not received any correspondence, um, in the form of written. And then we will be moving on to the citizens' request to address the board on any agenda, non-agenda item. Uh, per usual, you will have three minutes. You can please approach the microphone once I call your name. I ask, um, that you limit any clapping, yelling, wailing, anything like that. Um, in order, we do have quite a list tonight in order to get through and make sure everybody has their three minutes of being heard. Uh, with that, we are starting with Tyler Morgan.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Tyler Morgan. I've been a resident in Mount Pleasant for 16 years. I'm a parent to a child in the district, spouse to an educator in the district, and a former educator of the district myself. I would like to start by urging the board not to pass the resolution concerning sexuality and gender. You may not realize this now, and you may never know this, but your action here on this issue could save lives. Your action could send a message to all students in our district that we will not relegate you to the obscure margins of our curriculum in which students must opt in simply based on who you love, how you feel about your body, or how you identify. That you are valued members of our community and that your existence matters. At the last board meeting, we had a student in our district stand up here at this lecture and say that they felt scared that we were even discussing this issue. Now, I know the board has an obligation to listen to its constituency. I respect that. I would never suggest otherwise. And in fact, at the last meeting, I thanked the board for openly discussing this, uh, you know, to promote, uh, hearing differing opinions. But that said, I have two kids at home. And I hope for them that they always feel that school is a place for them where they can feel safe. And I hope for them that they never have to stand up in front of a room full of adults and say that they feel scared. Because safety is a base need. And if our students can't feel safe here, then nothing else we do here will make any difference. Now, I know the naysayers are already saying that not passing this resolution somehow means you are failing to include them. And maybe they're right. But our district's mission is to create an inclusive school, community of engaged, inspired and empowered learners. And if there are perspectives that are incompatible with this vision, I don't see how we can include them. Being inclusive doesn't mean including every last prospective out there because there are certainly dangerous perspectives out there. Instead, it means creating opportunities for those who might otherwise be or will have historically been excluded. And that's the fundamental mission of public education, to create opportunities for individuals who might not otherwise have. So again, I urge the board not to pass this resolution. And instead, I urge you to create opportunities for my children and for all children in our district to be whoever they need to be to grow into the caring, compassionate adults this world needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Fountain.
Hi, I'm Kelly Fountain. Um, I just say that, um, we need to adopt the resolution. Any explicit sex conversation or any issues to be, um, in sex ed classes or with certified counselor or with parent approval only. I can see maybe in an ELA class, sexual or controversial, things can come up in a book or a topic. Most teachers know how to keep discussions on topic and it starts to get too deep, then they, then as adults, know how to go and reroute it back to the topic. Teachers and staff are not licensed counselors and some, um, topics should, should not be discussed without approval. We do need more licensed counselors for all students. Our school needs to get back to what they are paid to do. Our school needs to get back to what they are paid to do. They are hired to teach the curriculum to graduate and create building classes for job skills. So please consider and pass the resolution. There's no reason to have sex in every class and that's just what I think. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Mark.
So, how does critical race theory play out in real life because it's here? The Minneapolis School District's last month declared they would now mandate that white teachers would be first, the first ones fired due to downsizing from budget cuts and loss of state funding. Second example, no bail laws. Why? Because the white man's justice system is the blame. It's inherently racist. It can't be fixed, so it must be torn down to the ground. Just a third example, defund the police for the same reasons as no bail laws. Fourth example, Derek Allen Abraham Lincoln's statute during the riots in 2020. Although Lincoln's responsible for freeing the slaves, he's white and an oppressor and therefore a white supremacist by birth. It's racist to think that way in addition to being totally illogical. Next, I want to correct an often repeated lie, told this time by a member of the community at last month's meeting. The three-fifths compromise of the 1788, 1788, our country's constitutional convention was not about a belief that black slaves were only three-fifths of a human being. It was instead about how many representatives of southern states which owned slaves would have in the U.S. Congress. Congressional representation was based on the census, the number of total people in each state. The southern states wanted black slaves counted as one per person for purposes of the census. And in order to limit influence of the slave-living states in Congress, the northern non-slave states lobbied for and got this three-fifths calculation. Pure seats in Congress was the end result for the southern states and their influence was reduced. Another thing happened at the Constitutional Convention. It was negotiated by the northern states that 20 years after the signing of the Constitution, by 1808, the importation of all slaves into the United States would be illegal. Also, within a few years of signing the Constitution, six of 13 states passed state laws making it illegal to own slaves. All six of these states were northern states. There was no federal law, just state laws at this time, making it illegal to own slaves because passage of the Constitution required a two-thirds vote of the 13 states or nine minimal states. And the southern states never would have signed the Constitution without federal prohibition on owning slaves and we never would have had a Constitution nor a country. That federal prohibition had to wait until the Civil War and subsequent passage of the 13th Amendment and freeing the slaves by the congressional Republicans and President Lincoln, not by the Democrats. To say this country was founded on slavery is a lie. We fought against it from the beginning and it's right there in plain sight for everybody to see.
Thank you. Next is Kirsten Nicholson.
Good evening. My name is Kirsten Nicholson. I'm the mother of a high schooler and a little forest. The Moms for Liberty proposal before the board is concerning to me on several fronts. It appears to misunderstand the difference between informing and promoting, and I don't believe that this is accidental. The purpose of education is to provide the opportunity for acquiring the knowledge and skills that will enable people to develop to their full potential and become successful members of society. Presenting information is not the same as promotion. Promotion is defined as activities that support or provide active encouragement for the furtherance of cause, venture, or aim, such as disease prevention or healthcare. Our teachers have been professionally trained in the topics in which they instruct, as well as the pedagogical techniques and best practices in the classroom. That includes responding to spontaneous questions from students, which might well include issues such as equal rights, systemic racism in U.S. history, or LGBTQI equals issues. Discussion in general does not constitute promotion or what I think they mean is indoctrination. For instance, telling students in our class that Van Gogh caught his own ear is probably not going to promote them to do the same. Also, in a biology class, if you're learning about anatomy via the section of panels, I don't think that's going to encourage students to run, you know, conducting surgery on their neighbors. While I don't disagree with that sex and sexuality are personal and intimate concepts, the entire Moms for Liberty motion is focused on a purported, quote, "promotion" of sexuality in various courses here, having, quote, "caused a division of students, parents, and community members." Learning about different cultures, practices, beliefs, and ways of living and loving is part of education. What each person does with that information is under their own individual control. No one is promoting anything in these classes, and I'm not sure what you think is happening during the school day, but this motion clearly represents the effort of one conservative special interest group to promote their own personal agenda to the exclusion of other views, and I do not support that. I trust our educators and our system and I want them to continue to inform students about many different perspectives as they have been doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Clara Bynell.
Hello, I'm Clara Bynell. I'm 15 years old and I'm a junior at N H S. I'm here to inform the board on the capricious enforcement of the dress code at the high school. The dress code was recently rewritten last summer and intended to make it gender neutral. However, the dress code is still very biased towards females and especially females with larger body types. I was dressed for it a couple weeks ago for wearing this outfit. After my experience, many of my fellow classmates have shared their own stories of being dressed for it with me and some of the accounts I heard were truly heartbreaking. There are girls, there are stories of girls being turned away at student entrance for their outfit and are not allowed in. Other girls have been pulled out of lunch in front of their peers and forced to cover up with ill-fitting items from the lost seat out. These experiences are incredibly humiliating and they feed into insecurity and body shaming. This begs the question, what disruption am I causing for wearing a crop top? In a period of our lives, we are all trying to find our own identities. We're not in an environment that allows us freedom of self-expression through clothing. Instead, we're being told by male classmates and faculty alike that a bigger girl wearing a crop top is disgusting. When I first posted about this issue on social media, I was met with dozens of other girls' stories, along with an overwhelming amount of support in favor of a change in the dress code. Following my post, I was also told by a male classmate to not dress like a whore. It seems to me that we're addressing the wrong issue. Why is it that women have to cover up because men cannot control themselves? The students of N H S are being subjected to an archaic Kamalansky standard that fuels outdated opinions of how a woman is supposed to dress and act. This is an opportunity for N H S to learn from past mistakes and progress into the 21st century. I implore you to investigate the dress code at the high school. We want to wear crop tops. We want to wear spaghetti straps with our bra straps showing. Our bodies are not a distraction and should not be treated as such. Please stop telling us what to wear. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol, sorry, Carol, so the last you called?
First of all, Tim, before I start, my three minutes. Kudos to the high school for all the administration, for all the changes you've been making, and I'm just really excited about this, so thank you for informing us of that. Okay, I've been coming to the school board meetings on and off for well over a year. I've heard that parents addressed the worry about inappropriate literature in the freshman honors English class, even reading the excerpt, "You shit bitch motherfucker," and a description of a wet ring. I've heard parents talk about the failing grades that their students received for not participating in English assignments with sexual content. I listened to an LGBTQ member, staff member, boldly state his influence on students. Recently, the same man was arrested in a pedophile sting operation intending to meet up with a 15-year-old boy. I will add that only two years ago, the swimming coach was convicted of sexually molesting a 12-year-old girl. At the last meeting, I heard community members criticize parents concerned for the safety of their children. It seems to me that the concern is not over-grammatized or close-minded, but actually very real. Let's not gloss over the events that have caused the concern. It's not about reading Romeo and Juliet. I've listened to comments by the board staff and students stating that the lack of engagement and concern by the parents is much of the problem with student behavior and assessment. Why are parents who are engaged in their child's education being criticized? I listened to the statement of the state of Michigan, which acknowledges the rights of the parents, and I see why there's a proposed resolution. The definition of parental rights seems to be up for debate, even though it's clearly stated. I've listened to the statement of the Mount Pleasant School District. If a student comes to a staff member to seek advice or to ask questions regarding a personal problem related to sexual behavior, substance abuse, mental or physical health, and/or family relationships, the staff member may help the student, may contact with certified or licensed individuals in the district or community who specialize in the assessment, diagnosis, and treatment of a student's problem. At their last meeting, there were questions about how to implement the proposed resolution. How is the above policy implemented? It's not one and the same, and actually, why do we need a resolution if we're just following what we've already made policy? Okay, so, are the current practices leading down the long road, which puts our children at risk and increases the risk for the at-risk kids? You tell me, is having two staff members being charged/convicted of pedophilia in a two-year period the norm? Is this a new pattern? What programs are in place to protect our kids and create predator awareness? I've been a volunteer at two different organizations that work directly with kids. In both cases, I was required to attend predator awareness workshops, which gave law enforcement information, statistics, and video testimonials of convicted pedophiles. This is standard practice for training staff and volunteers. The Mount Pleasant School District would best serve the community by creating and maintaining a neutral learning environment which focuses on basic educational outcomes, which raise assessments and follows its own policies for parental rights through the current direction of education. The online curriculum that was referenced at the last meeting is barely more than a course subscription, which does not list assignments and content. That would be a course syllabus which I was not able to find. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Pat Capriolo.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jack. Things are going really well in our high school right now. I'm very, uh, thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you. Next is April Gordon.
Hello, my name is April Gordon. I'm here in behalf of a segment of Lloyd G. Tides of Michigan. And tonight I come before you, I took the documents that you guys shared last week and met with some of my tribal leaders. And you know, there was a lady that just spoke previously saying promoting versus presenting. It's a very slippery slope. I know all too well the ancestors from my tribal community, who when somebody higher up through administration, government, and the boarding school had great ideas and programs that they would put in place for our people, only to use it to harm them in very awful ways. And you know, you guys have this partnership with the tribe. How many of you guys really know about what happened at the boarding school here in town? Do any of you ever attend to learn that history? So my leaders are very upset that we are hiding behind critical race theory and D E I, and they support this resolution regarding the sexual opt-out because they know too well that schools can create and come up with something that they want to implement, start with their teachers, only for it to end up harming our people. So today I come before you just to let you know that they don't support the critical race theory or the D E I and nor you voting down the sexual resolution. Thank you.
Next is Laura Corley.
Oh, I just noticed that, my name is Laura Corley. I teach in the Mount Pleasant Public School, I'm a school counselor. And I noticed that you were going to be talking about the Orange Shirt Day and I happen to have one on. And I think it's worth noting that the motto of Orange Shirt Day is "Every child matters." And I think that fits in well with our goal of being an educational system that every child matters. And I guess we can talk about what that means. I also have a really neat book called The Orange Shirt Day, September 30th. It's at the tribal library. It's not it today, I didn't even find it. It's the Native American advocate at my school gave to me, and I've been looking at it all day and it's really fabulous and it's at the tribal library and folks could check it out and have some ideas of how to best talk about what Orange Shirt Day really is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Katie Reed.
Thank you, Katie Reed. I have five children. My oldest graduated last year from the high school and everyone's a sophomore. I just want to thank the high school administration for the improved communication this year. It's been wonderful. I'm the first born girl to do this kind of girl and I love to have all the information that I need. I also am so thankful for the bell-to-bell no cell policy. I know that, you know, there's kids watching full Netflix series last year in school and now they can still have it with them, which I'm thankful for with school safety issues. It's really assuring your kids can say, "Mom, I'm okay," even though we're on lockdown. So I thought that was a really good policy they came up with to address the safety issues, but also not wasting class time. Also, the new athletic director has brought in improved communication. The Chromebooks are great and I also hear the concern from many about the dress code and so I'm confident that this new administration, the students and teachers can work together to address those concerns as well. I also want to thank the board for starting the parent council and welcoming parent involvement and communication. I know that many people are relieved and excited about that, so thank you for that. I also appreciate the thought, discussion, clarification, is going to be considering this resolution concerning sexuality and gender education promotion. It seems to me like the overall request is for transparency, collaboration, and accountability, especially because there's been numerous instances where trust has been broken and I think that with things that have been promoted or taught. So I think being upfront about that which is being taught and the training the teachers are receiving, it's a protection for the district, right? I'm a former educator, I know it's important to be upfront so that there aren't those surprises. As evident by the students who spoke at the last board meetings, our students are smart and capable, yet I also want to remind you, they are minors. These are not college students. The vast majority of parents want to be supportive of this district. When parents feel included, heard, and viewed as an asset, not an obstacle, we can all work together and rally together for the good of all students. That's what people want, not just to cause problems. At the last board meeting, it was said numerous times that we want all students to succeed. As Laura just mentioned, every child matters, yet in the name of inclusion, we are excluding students. This is not the way forward. We want to learn from history. We don't want to, if something's wrong, we don't want to try to right it with another wrong. It's essential to learn from history, work together, treat all our students, staff, parents, board members with dignity and respect. It's possible to do this, to link arms. I just want to end with one example. My student was in honors English. He came to me and said, "Mom, I'm not comfortable with what I've been required to read." He's a ninth grader. He wanted to blend in. He did not want to stand out. And when I came to find out exactly what he'd been required to read, I was shocked. And if he would use the same language as what he read in that book, it would be sexual harassment in the workplace. And so I think, okay, so what I just want to end with is that teachers can choose some of the things they draw out, and so we want to be sure that we are being clear with parents about what is there so they can choose whether their student would opt in or opt out because the parents are their guardians and these are minors. So thank you so much.
Next is Kathy Willermet.
Hello, members of the board and members of the audience. My name is Kathy Willermet and I am a parent of just graduated senior and a junior in the high school. I've talked with you in the past about issues of gender and issues of biological sex. The problem that this resolution still, in its modified form, still fails to address is that a lot of the conversations that come up, don't come up as a result of talking about sex or sexuality directly. We can talk about, well, maybe this book and not the southern book, or, you know, pick and choose topics to particularly focus on, but our teachers are trying to teach things that are really important to our history, to our sociology, to our cultural past, to our cultural current, to our ethics, and our, our current political culture. So, for example, in our history class, do teachers not talk about Sacagawea? And if they do talk about Sacagawea, can they not talk about issues of how, why she was, why she was, had experienced something she was experiencing during the process of colonization of this country? And what if a student asked to talk about, or why, you know, why was the woman, why was the woman involved? Why, why do things happen a certain way? Can you not talk about Sally Hemings when we're talking about American history and Jefferson? So these questions come up with our students and they're all part and parcel of the historical and cultural fabric of our country. And we, by removing any conversations about those, it makes it very difficult to have a really truly balanced view of what's happened in the past and what's happening in the present. The opt-out or opt-in process- The opt-out or opt-in process is extremely difficult because we cannot predict when some of those conversations are going to happen. And in addition, if we just limit all of the topics that students are going to learn to some very, very safe and narrow topics, we lose the opportunity for the students to understand that holistic cultural fabric. Thank you. And I encourage you to vote against this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Ellen Scott. So first off, I'd like to talk about this resolution. Part of this language in it is despite trying to make a differentiation between their definitions of sexual identity and orientation, it equates homosexuality to being inherently sexual. For example, whereas sexuality and gender are defined as characteristics and behaviors, including genitalia and attraction, to whether it be physically, mentally, or emotionally desires of and sexual desires, that's not true. Like, who you are attracted to does not necessarily have to do with sexual things. Love is not inherently sexual. And also, people like to add that. And then also, the wording of promotion is not, is simply clarifying what something is and explaining what that encompasses is not promotion of anything. I'm a good top that like homophobia exists and it wasn't necessarily promoting it. And one of the examples of E L A situations with books that have topics that aren't necessarily up to code with this resolution, the book To Kill a Mockingbird has been tried to ban from schools for generations and we have come to a conclusion racism is bad despite what some people apparently think about critical race theory. But, and now it's being taught in schools, well, nationwide, nationwide. And many people are learning and growing from that book despite there being some disruptions in class or people might linger on some word choices in the book that perhaps should be. And then also, this chart of circles of sexuality, we, it is implied that this is about sexual identity and sexual orientation despite that being a different circle of it. And the equating these two matters is implied of it. And so if this resolution was simply about talking about sexual things in a classroom, it would state sexual things in a classroom, not sexual identity or gender orientation. And a lot of this discussion has also equated pedophilia to being homosexual, which is just not true. And it has been one of the things that has been pushed through to try to promote homophobia throughout the generations. And a lot of this text, um, not being very upfront about it, but it tries to almost paint homophobia as pervading, like focusing on genitalia and attractions and sexuality, when more so, those that see homosexuality as inherently sexual, I would argue to say are the pervading ones. And then one thing about the extra parents, Katie, well, I, all of the people who have lagged behind and need help getting caught up should absolutely get the care they need. But one thing is, is those who score high, sometimes...
Just be shut up for a second.
What?
Yeah, three minutes, please.
Thank you.
I'm Nikki Christensen. I'm here in the area of my childhood, as a student at Mount Pleasant High School regarding the dress code, particularly the line in the dress code regarding clothing that's revealing, suggesting, suggestive, or otherwise distracting. Regarding revealing, Claire's outfit is completely lovely. However, I'm sure some of you might remember Robert Plant and Freddie Mercury wearing jeans that are much, much more revealing than anything any of the students in this high school wear. Likewise, suggestive, what is the definition of suggestive in this dress code? And who is making that decision? That is something that is very disturbing to me because it's sexualizing the children in this school. Regarding distracting, what exactly is distracting? Are sequins now going to be distracting? Nail polish on students who are assumed to be male distracting? Piercings, tattoos? There's just not a clear line and it's set up to have people making decisions rather than guidelines for the students to follow. One other thing I saw was regarding underwear showing. I think you need to watch that regarding minority students and cultural norm. It is absolutely a cultural norm for minority students to have a waistband showing. Are they going to be dress coded to that? Finally, I just want to say that my own child, who is a cis male, finds this dress code as framing the school, as promoting cis-head male education, about the education of female students or LGBTQ students, and that really disturbs it. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Gabe Fanning and I'm a senior at M P H S. And I want to talk to you about the way the dress code is being enforced this year. I think, as a person who generally presents male, I could wear short shorts and a thin scarf type top to school every single day and I would almost certainly never be told to change. I've definitely seen some guys do worse. I've seen guys go shirtless at games and be told by administrators, yet that's still okay. They can do this because the dress code near exclusively targets girls and is as it is currently enforced. That's ridiculous. Nowhere in the student handbook does it mention any rules preventing students from wearing what they're most often dress coded for. The exact language states, as Mickey said, clothing that is revealing, suggestive, or otherwise distracting. That rule allows enforcers far too much power to decide what constitutes a stack distracting clothing. This rule is not being broken. I have never once at school or elsewhere seen a single person distracted by what a girl is wearing to the degree administrators seem to believe spaghetti straps and skirts are causing disruption. In fact, I've had far more time at school wasted because of the enforcement of these rules. I hear stories nearly every day of students, girls always strange glinting, late to class or having anxiety attacks because of harsh and unreasonable treatment by dress code enforcers. It is one of the only things universally on the mind of every student because of how strictly it is enforced. I've never even been dress coded and I found myself completely focused on the rule, but hardly once even discussed last year. To conclude, all I wish to say is that this issue affects every single student at the high school almost solely because of the ridiculous and sexist ways it enforced. Each and every one of us finds ourselves now in a world where we live in fear of our rights being taken away by a code that sees young girls' bodies as objects of distraction and treats all of us as if we are senseless and undeserving of the basic right to wear what we wish. And while I'm up here, I also want to say to please vote against the resolution because the dress code is the real thing to sexualize the students. The way it's said is being taught. The E L A is being taught in no way can that, and it's terrifying to me as a student. Thank you.
When I settle arguments between my own children or sometimes between my students at school, sometimes I'll ask them to tell the other person's perspective before they tell me whatever it is they want to tell me. So I know that they're fighting and I need to make sure they understand what the other person has said. And I find that this converts aggressive feelings like anger and fear into listening and empathic, empathetic behaviors. And I think that's what we see happening in some of this debate regarding the resolution. There's words that get twisted to mean completely opposite things. And we're not settling down to where we can actually have a rational conversation because people are talking at each other and not listening to even though what the facts are. When we get down to the facts, there is no grooming, there's no promotion of genitalia attraction, and there's no indoctrination happening in our schools. But when we spin stories through the telephone game, it can get scary and that's really why we're here. I heard a story tonight, a parent talking about a middle school student failing because they didn't participate in a lesson on sexuality. I know that's patently false. I know that it wasn't written in the promotion letter, even though it was quoted to the state board that. And maybe it's taken out because you guys have investigated and know that that's false by now. The people in the audience may not know that. Some of them may be asking questions, but that, since it's still coming up, it needs to be talked about. And if that takes longer than three minutes to explain, because it's false for like six different reasons. But if that needs to be go through, then I can help clear that up if people need to know the why. One of the words that we need to talk about is equity, okay? Equity is something like when special ed students, students that need special ed services get them because they have access to education. They're getting something that other people don't because that's what they need to have a fair chance. Equity is something like mental health services for veterans to help fight suicide. Equity is something like social security for seniors that can't work as much anymore. Now, equity has been equated to Marxism or something, so that we can't even talk about it. But a mature definition of fairness includes both equity and equality because at times everybody needs the same things, but one size doesn't fit all all the time. That's not fair. So that's what equity is for, is for when one size fits all doesn't work. And we all know that that's false, but then we throw equity out because we've had propaganda against it. Things like figuring out what words actually means, that we can have adult conversations is what we need. We do not need resolutions so that people can push stories and fabrications and bully things that they do not like out of education. Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize if I get this next name wrong.
I pastored in this area for 25 years and nearly 36 total. I've worked with hundreds of children and families providing counsel, aid, and support for many of them. And as a pastor, I knew my position. It was as a help to these families and that I should be careful not to assert the trust given to these parents. Children are a piece of property we own, but a trust that we're given. The family relationship is the primary trust and it has to be protected. It is foundational to a child's life, church, school, sports, and many other branches that are there to aid and help the family raise their child in an environment to be the people that we hope that they will become. Their branches used to exercise that trust that the family's been given. The resolution that you would be considering is a great way for you as a board to recognize that trust and that as a school district, you recognize and support that trust. Thank you to those of you who sat down with those presenting it for consideration. It shows your desire to want to honor that trust. After all, the real issues that are being considered are of much greater consequence. If we'll inform our parents about parties, they should not be left out of things and decisions regarding their children that have much greater consequence. Last month, I listened as we were here. I was asked to speak. I refused to speak just because I needed to listen before I had anything valuable to say. I listened as we heard a call for more mental health workers. But let's be clear, many say COVID helped bring that on, and it's not the culprit, but rather the magnifying glass by which these issues have clearly come to light. The breakdown in the family has been the main culprit. And when parents are not put to the task of caring for this trust that's been given to them, that's where the real problem lies. Our schools in no way through secrecy or undercover should exacerbate this problem by subverting those who are truly responsible for these children. Then I heard something on C R T. Let me say this, evil has always existed on every continent and has happened by all people groups. We have to start there. Having grown up in an area that had evils and coming from a family who had a branch that was highly involved in those types of evils, I have a unique perspective. Am I done? It's a three-minute start. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff Bean. I just wanted to say a thank you to the board for actually letting a committee be formed to have a meeting where each side could sit and discuss this resolution. I'm a rather newbie to this situation and I've listened a lot and I've said a few things, but I learned a lot. And I'd like to thank Sheila, Raleen, and Dana's not here, and then the superintendent, excuse me, superintendent earlier for being congenial. I think there was a lot of understanding took place. Doesn't mean I don't know what's going to happen in the resolution tonight, but at least there was talk. And what I'm here tonight, several times I've heard people say on each side is their concern, and I heard in the meeting that we had last Wednesday, is that they want a safe, they want a safe place for their students. Well, all sides want a safe place and we've got to figure it out. And it isn't too bad in this day and age that we can't talk side to side to try and resolve our problems because it's intercoherent, because we have no time for one another. With that, I say thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bring over. I'm actually the moderator of the Rudea, Isabella County, Chair. And I thank you and I figured I'd ask them what Jeff said. I really appreciate the time and opportunity to sit down and have an argument discussion. And if there's some questions and concerns to this resolution. For those of you that are here, I appreciate hearing the words that you have to say because it helps me understand where I can offer more enlightenment about what this resolution means. The first thing that I want to say, and I do not say this in a bad way, this is not about anybody from the LGBTQ community. This is not about being homophobic. This is about sexuality and gender. A lot of the books that we hear read across the state of Michigan, it is about sexual content. And that's where, that's where this resolution needs to start and that's where parents need to be brought into the situation. With that said, what would this look like? This resolution keeps sexuality and gender discussion and instruction and promotion in sexual education class. And if it is out of sexual education class, it states that the parents must be made aware. That's it. It doesn't say remove it, but it doesn't say don't do it. And what you could do, this is my example, are you okay with it if an instructor decides to instruct Christianity? No. If it's going to happen, the parents need to be made aware. The next thing that it does is when the parent opts out, they're able to give their child an alternative. So let's say there's a family that doesn't want to participate in the pre-studies. Does that student get an app for not participating or are they given an alternative? And this is already done with Zoe and Juliette. So what would this look like? Parents would be aware of this if there's going to be sexuality or gender content. They would have an option to opt out and then the alternatives be offered. Now, I've heard some concerns about recognition. This is not about recognizing somebody if they have programs that they want to use. No, really, I've heard that they use the word recognition. This is, however, a gray area and not just brought up. So let me ask you, if it's a gray area, wouldn't we want parent permission? And to remind you of how important parent permission is, in the last two years, Mount Pleasant Public Schools has made national news, three times. And each of those times, that had to do with parents. There was the haircut incident, the parent wasn't informed. That staff had amazing intentions, the parent wasn't involved. There was the incident with the student in the room, the parent wasn't informed, she wasn't from the student. And then there was the sex predator who stood up on the stage and said, "Parents, your values don't matter. We don't need to really let them go irrelevant." It is imperative that parents are involved. And if these conversations come up organically, we have rules that are about sexual behavior discussions. We can let our students know that's a great conversation, that's not a conversation through this classroom. Parent awareness is all that we're asking for. And I do ask that you all vote in favor of adopting this resolution, create policies... If any policies that help that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ms. DeBennett.
Hello, thank you. I'm Ms. DeBennett. I am a resident of Isabella County. I'm a mother of two in Mount Pleasant School District. I am a public school educator myself, and I'm also Christian, which will be relevant to my conversation. I am also a mom who believes in liberty differently than the Moms for Liberty group. Liberty being freedom from an oppressive, single-minded viewpoint, being educated, and with access and restriction to education for our students. So I want to echo something that we are all here in the interest of safety for our students. I think that's really important framing. I think it's really important when we're looking at things like adopting new resolutions to consider data and the outcomes that it will impact. And in that vein of safety of students, we know that there are wealth of meta-analyses regarding data of effectiveness of sex ed programs that actually end up promoting, not promoting, but really ending with more abstinence, higher abstinence rates. So these are, these are things that students, we all know, will discover eventually, whether or not we discuss them in class. But specifically regarding this resolution, there are several problems with the statement that I want to discuss. Some have been touched on briefly earlier. The fact that instruction, discussion, and promotion are separate. There are various things in here where the statement is unclear, or things are not consistent with typical regarded definitions about gender. It's unable to enact these policies. And they're not representative of Christian viewpoints, nor of parent viewpoints for many of us. Parents are not, I think last week, there were several comments about parents being certified, or I'm sorry, about students receiving instruction, for quotes, "certified in gender instruction." I'm not sure what that looks like, but parents don't receive such certification. And there are many parents sadly who are conducting rape and incest in the homes. And so I'm concerned for those students that if they don't have a place to go outside of, those parents would certainly not opt their children into those conversations, that children may not find their way to safety. And I also think that this document actually proposes several things against our own resolution. The statements from the Constitution, morality, treating every person as equal, talking about discrimination. I think this actually would limit and discriminate Christian students to some degree that would be unable to receive education and have access to education. So some of the statements regarding Christianity talk about that presupposing that if you're a Christian, you should be able to fly a flag in opposition to the sexuality flag. That juxtaposition suggests that all Christians believe that homosexuality is wrong, and that's not a true statement. So I think that, you know, gray area that whole discussion is very unclear. And I think it's very unclear the actual statement that they're talking about genitalia and infections too. It's left open, infections too, we assume genitalia. And then finally, just the inability of teachers to be able to prevent discussion from happening. And understanding, I think, is for parents. Sorry, it's kind of.
Thank you. Next, the consent items. First off is the approval of the minutes from the September 6th, 2022 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is the financial, the approval of bills from the sum of $977,268.60.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then that moves us next on to new business. First off is the resolution concerning sexuality and gender education and promotion in the Michigan Public Schools. Would anybody like to move that agenda item forward?
How? I will, as far as I think we need to put this stress one way or the other. So I guess I'll move to that we pass it just to get the discussion going.
Okay. Is there a second in order to form a discussion?
I'll second it to form a discussion of the school board members. And just to clarify, the public, we're working off of a amended version that occurred after the meeting that the team had. We have a slight language change that was proposed. This is what we're working off of, not the one that we had at the last meeting. Is that fair?
That's fair. I believe that copies of the amended document have been distributed to the majority audience.
I guess my problem with this is I think it's too. There's a lot of wordings here and a lot of unclarity that it could go either way. That's my big problem with this. I have no problem with the fact that parents want, should have the right to be notified of what contents. What did we use, trigger points?
The trigger.
Trigger content. And I have absolutely no problem with that. I think that that would be a good thing, that if there's controversial topics coming up in a class, that the parents have the option to know that that's coming up. What it includes, whether their child is comfortable or not comfortable in it, with that particular subject matter, and have an opportunity to opt out.
I mean, including content warnings in syllabi is not unusual at college level. I think there are members of the English staff maybe in the audience who would agree with that. But anyway, I mean, that's unobjectionable to me. I mean, you know, we have to come.
We do have content warnings in our.
I mean, I thought that at least at that high school level, and I assume at the middle school level, there are content warnings in syllabi for the most part.
I foresee some as a middle school parent. So I'm not sure we have everyone turning up, and maybe that could be something that we incorporate. I think what we can keep from this discussion is that indeed, we're all after the same thing. We're all on safety for all the children. And communication with parents is an important part. I do believe we're doing a lot of it already, but we can continue to work in that direction. I do not believe it takes the look of a resolution. I find it really concerning in many ways. I disagree with the lumping of sexuality with gender. I believe that the two are very different, and the state tells us the two are different, and we've got to follow our state laws. And so I'm not in the view of passing this resolution.
Yeah, and I can't remember if this has come up in the past, but on the sex ed advisory board, we went through a lengthy conversation with experts from the state about, you know, what is sexuality, what is gender, what belongs in a sex ed class, what is free rein. And I feel like our district right now is complying with everything we learned in that very lengthy conversation.
So I'd like to say that I find that much of this resolution has very vague language in it. It obfuscates. There's not much clarity as to how the policy on that point of it, it's very, very weak. But more importantly, the parts that you can pull out that when people have conversations, they gel it to certain concepts. And I find that to be against what our district vision, mission, and our belief systems that the community has established, wholeheartedly along every line. I agree that parents are part of the conversation. I think parents have always been part of the conversation. And I think there's always ways to improve that conversation and feel the safety of parents. But in general, I'm going to vote against this resolution.
And I mean, I would like for everyone here to know that parents are welcome in the classroom pretty much anytime. That can always be arranged between teachers and administrators. Parents are always welcome to talk to teachers. And all the teachers that I know and have encountered as a parent and amongst my friends, they're always ready to talk to parents about their concerns. So I feel that a lot of what people are asking for in terms of transparency and collaboration and accountability, we already offer that. And perhaps we're not doing a great job of communicating that. But that's, those things are all available without this resolution.
And I think the biggest problem we have right now is this. All right, my youngest kid was in school 20 years ago, so obviously. But parents are sending their kids to school not thinking about these kinds of things, being talked about, or in what way they're being discussed, or how they're being discussed, and not knowing how it's going to be discussed. And then everybody's hearing this, that, and the other thing. This is what the problem is. So let's fix the problem. Let's, the biggest problem is there's things being taught in the class that some parents and some students are not comfortable with. And accept that that's a fact, and we need to say, well, we don't agree that we shouldn't have to talk about it, but you know, it's not up to us. It's up to the parents to make that discussion or to decide that. And if there's an issue of abuse in the home or that type of thing, there are many other ways. I mean, those should be being handled and in a whole, we're not talking about that kind of a thing here. What we're talking about is parents just simply want to know what's being discussed. We had some books come up that were in a library unbeknownst and were read here. And personally, I found shocking. Yes, I'm old age, but you know, didn't think it was appropriate for high school. All right? That gets around, people hear about it, and that's what starts this. So we just need to be considerate and understand that not everybody has the same opinion about things and be respectful of those who don't agree with us and give them the option. That's all anybody wants. And again, if that means something comes up, talk to the parent about it. Hey, this came up today. And parents, it's on you as well, if something comes home and you hear about it, to call and talk to the teacher and say, hey, this came up, what happened? Give me the whole clue. All right? So it's got to be a two-way street. You got to work with the parents whether you agree with them or not. And parents, you have to step up and take responsibility for knowing what's being taught to your kids and asking them. So I see that most everything is already in our policy. Our board policies have quite a bit of this already in them. I would say we just need to be a little more forceful about enforcing them and have our teachers be a little bit more considerate about making sure the parents know what books and what topics are going to be taught. But again, I agree with the principle of this, but I'm not crazy about how vague it is in some things. But I do agree with it in principle.
Okay, so with that being said, we have to take a two or vote. So there, the vote then is about moving the resolution forward as it has been newly presented, as it was handed out tonight, and then also with the resolution being modified after the meeting. So we have the motion on the table. So all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, saying no?
No.
No. Okay, so that passes.
I would say aye on principle. I knew it wasn't going to get passed, but I will say aye on principle.
Aye on principle, so that's one with the rest in opposed to that. So with that, that resolution will not be moving forward. Next, we move on to new questions.
Good evening, everyone. We are excited to welcome Lennon Torres. I believe he's in the audience somewhere tonight. Welcome Lennon. Lennon is a Mount Pleasant High School graduate. He's been coaching cross-country or track just about ever since he graduated from our high school. Lennon came highly recommended by Mr. Conway, Mr. McIntyre, and Mr. Hicks, and many cross-country and track families and athletes as well. And we welcome Lennon to teach elementary physical education.
Is there a motion to accept Lennon Torres tonight to be the new elementary physical education? So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And welcome to the district. Thank you so much. Next is donation. In your board back of this evening, you have documentation regarding a donation from the Isabella County Moms for Liberty. They donated a pocket constitution for all of our eighth grade students at Mount Pleasant Middle School and in the Way Oasis program to celebrate Constitution Day. Constitution Day is September 17th, but because that is a Saturday, we celebrated it last Friday on September 16th. So we're asking you to accept the donation with an estimated value of $75. Is there a motion to accept the donation as presented tonight? So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And thank you very much. We appreciate the donation. Next is the board member resignation. Courtney Segman has resigned from the board effective today for personal family reasons. With that being said, we do have to approve that through a motion. And then we are looking into next steps. There will be communication from the superintendent's office. It will be presented in multiple ways on how you can apply to fill the seat. So more information is to come. But is there a motion to accept the resignation of Courtney Segman from the board? So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And with that, she has been presented. She has her.
Can you give people basically, there's so many days that we have in order to.
I can update a little bit on that. And this item obviously was added to our agenda. It was a last minute, so I don't have all the information this evening, so I don't want to incorrectly. It has to be filled within 30 days. That's about mine. We know that the position has to be filled. We will post the opening, we will accept applications. The board will interview the applications or the applicants, should you choose to do so. And then the board will make an appointment. What I don't know is how long the position has to be posted for. I don't know how long. So Courtney was in the third year of a.
Fourth year?
Yeah. Okay, fourth year of a six-year term. So I don't know if we're appointing for the remainder of that time or how long. This would only be like when we leave, was appointed, it was only for, what, four months or something like that. I know that obviously it's too close to be elected at the November election, but it might be that this person would be appointed through the.
Because there's two available, so would we then take the top three votes? You can't do that.
You cannot do that.
I knew that we had discussed this before, and I can't remember.
Because we have to appoint someone within 30 days. Like, that's the one piece that I know is definite. We have to appoint someone within 30 days.
Yes, I do know that.
Yep, so I did reach out to the Michigan Association of School Board this afternoon to get their guidance, to get their information. Again, it was sort of last minute, so I haven't heard back from them. So once we have all that information, we'll send that out in an email to parents. We'll send it out on our website, on social media. We'll make sure that it's widely broadcast so that everyone knows the timeline.
So chances are, this would go through 2024.
I think it would be for the remainder of the two years because board members are only elected on even-year elections. But I don't know that part for sure, but I'm almost sure it would be a two-year.
Yeah, their term is up at the end of 2024.
How it works would be the next election that's available would be when that term of appointment would end. But if they take my chance.
November 2024.
In November 2024. But that's what we need to confirm to make sure that the laws, recents, that we need to confirm.
So unless things have changed, I think something that the public should know is that even if someone is running to be on the school board in the upcoming November election, it is still applied and be taken as a board member currency. Is that when the upcoming election in a couple of months, it makes it that they've switched to a six-year term? And we would have to appoint someone else.
They have to resign from the appointed seat.
They have to resign from that. It's kind of confusing. Like, if we resign from the two-year, accept the six-year, and then we would have to appoint someone else from the two-year. But I think it's important for everyone to know, last time you were not clear on whether as we were running, we were able to apply as well. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that.
I just knew it was confusing when it happened.
It is confusing, and unfortunately, we don't have to do this often. And so the rules change and the laws change, so I want to make sure that everything is completely clear. But we will have that information out to our community by the end of this week. So you have the timeline, and you know what to expect.
All right, now it is time for a board of education discussion. This is an opportunity for any board member to discuss issues or concerns that they may. This is an opportunity for any board member to discuss issues or concerns that they may have. At this time, does anyone have anything that they would like to discuss today?
I just want to clarify one thing too. The board decides who makes it, who replaces it. It's not, that's why you said when we interview, this board will decide who's the next, who fills her position.
Just an appointment as opposed to an action?
Correct. Thank you.
If I'm not mistaken, it's banned books week, so I'd like to encourage everybody to read some banned books.
And also write his home.
Do you have a list? Oh, yeah. There are all kinds of places for banned books. Like not here, but there's books that are provided.
Is that there anything else? All right, with that, the meeting is adjourned.